Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody, enjoying the beautiful weather today. Just joking around, we almost canceled the meeting because of good weather instead of bad weather, but now we wouldn't do that. Roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
I'm here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
All right. I will entertain a motion to pay bills.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the bills payable in the amount of $13,260.76.
Support. Motion, support. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Next is Supervisor's report. Been busy, actually, writing grants. It is the grant writing season. Been, I got asked for State of Michigan for $250,000 for a marsh master. I got a DNR trust fund development grant for the Harson's Island Nature Park I'm working on. That grant's a $400,000 grant. FEMA grant for radios, I think that was around $283,000. And federal earmark for our Harson's Island wastewater treatment plant, $2,250,000. And then we got some stuff, actually, from the county, too, coming up. So, but this stuff alone is worth $3,483,000 in grants I'm working on, so I got a couple more weeks to bang them out. I got tons of letters of support, which is really nice for all these items. Have a meeting scheduled, I just got switched, it's March 9th, with Gary Peters over at the St. Clair Shores Coast Guard Station being shut down. And basically how they're going to respond and what's going to be anything new with that. We already met with them once before, right here in Clay, with all the participants. Our playground upgrades that we got the Spark Grant for is out for bid. The bids are due in by April 4th, and once we're doing, we got to send them to the DNR for their approval, and then it'll be before this board, April 15th, for us to award the bids. Recall, I got a Spark Grant for $584,000 to do a bunch of playground upgrades, new playscapes, and part of that is of the bid, we're going to repurpose the existing playscape over in Brown's Field on the island. I've been working on with Eagle and wetland mitigation for the treatment plan on Harson's Island, and last Friday, I actually, we got a verbal agreement to move forward with them, and so we're submitting all the paperwork and everything to get that print behind us. It's been an interesting journey. We actually submitted 13 proposals, site proposals, that they, well, this isn't special or ideal or anything, but we've come to agreement. They sensed my frustration a few times. I met with the St. Clair County Road Commission, and update, they will be repaving Stone Road between Sword Out and High. That's a primary road, and they're responsible for that. And the county will also be looking at replacing on Harson's Island Bates Drive, Bates Road, the Mayberry Bridge. And we are, they are redesigning the Blue Bill Bridge, and that cost estimate's going to be higher, they're actually estimating about 1.1 million. After the federal state and county grants we received, the township share of that will be $3,000. So, if we had to pay for that whole thing, yeah, it would be not good. And oddly enough, Eagle's requiring them, they didn't have seawall right underneath the bridge, and Eagle's requiring them to put steel seawall.
What?
Yes. I know. We laughed upon them to actually put steel seawall there, where they won't allow anywhere else.
Boulders with the turtle ring?
Yeah. Exactly. So, and Fruit Road, that came in about where the estimate was, so our share of that's going to be 90,000, so it's going to be a 50-50 match with the county. And as I put in here, we're concerned about some of these large culverts. I had a whole list, like five of them, but the big two of them, the two big ones is on Bayview Shores, and is about five, six years ago, the second one on Bayview Shores failed, and we had to shut that road down for about a year and a half and figure out how to fix it. We didn't shut it down, we, it was open temporarily one lane, and we took care of that. And they really don't have an estimate as far as, like, you know, they'll say, oh, it'll last two, three, four years, one year. They're just guessing on this because the other one failed, they're assuming this one's going to fail. But right now, their estimated cost to fix this is 300,000, which I can only get a $100,000 grant to help pay for it, so that 200,000 is going to be on our township's responsibility. I was going to ask them to go ahead and get the permits from Eagle and everything else and the design, so we'll have a lot better idea, this is just an estimate design, so we'd have a lot better idea on if it would actually going to be around 300,000 or not. And the other one is, as you can see, is the drain on Crispin Road that goes over the Crispin Drain. They have a lifespan of one to three years. They said that the degradation of the steel is 50% to 75% steel loss, with a lot of pinholes and up to two inches of holes in it, and the cost of this one is going to be about 65,000. So, we got to start making plans for both of these. I do have three others on the list, but they're saying, you know, we should probably deal with this in the next five, six years, and the average costs on these are between 55 and 60 grand, but just wanted the board to be aware, we're going to have to start putting some money in these large culverts. We are, we did get notice that actually the head of Eagle, the director, is going to come out here for a day to Clay Township to see what's going on. I've been putting some pressure on him. I basically told him that, you know, Clay Township, we do more permits than any other municipality in the state, and he should come out and visit us to see what it looks like and our challenges are and concerns, so he agreed to do that this spring, so that would be, that's going to be good. I know he wanted to go see what we're doing with LG Plan on Harson's Island and check out our nature park over there that we wanted to put in, and he wanted to go see the old club where it burned, and a couple places on the mainland, too. EDA is actually working with different programs to help out, Elgnac Casts, Henry Smith, and Miners, on, to retain employees or see if they can help them out in expanding their business. Clay Township, we're doing the American Indian Powwow along with Clay Days, May 11th, and San Souci Block Party will be May 18th, starting at 5:00 downtown San Souci, and May 18th and 19th is actually the Township Cleanup, too. So, we'll have dumpsters available Saturday, on the mainland, and Saturday and Sunday on the island. That's all I have. All right. Moving right along. Public comments. Do we have any public comments? Okay.
Yeah. I was in your office today. My name's Eddie Bauer, Eddie Bauer, 9601 Doty. You guys need to get a new system in place here. Your people are, I'm going to tell you, very incompetent back room. Here's Ira Township, I went to Cascade Township, I've gone everywhere. I can't get an address. My address you gave me, 9601 Doty Highway, Clay Township, I already made jokes about this in July. I've got emails right here, I could show you. He sent the chief out to my house to see where I lived, and I went today to get a driver's license, and guess what? I don't have a DMV. My address is not in the DMV, I can't get a driver's license. I'm going to lose my concealed weapons permits. I've got FFLPs, I've got a lot of different things.
What'd they use in a pass for your driver's license?
My house in the city, and I've been out here now five months, so I've got to do it out here.
Okay.
And I've been to your office, I showed them, here's Ira Township. This is what they do for addresses, and I took this to your people today, and guess what they told me? You guys don't have a form like this. I went over to Cascade Township, I asked them what happens. They literally give this form to the post office, the guy you went swimming with a month and a half ago. Here's from the United States Post Office, what to do, details. I had to go to Detroit, and everybody keeps pointing the finger at you guys. I want an address, a legal address. Is that something they ask for after 40 years?
No. And we've gone-
I'm just furious about this.
Well, I understand it, but we've-
If I get pulled over, what's going to happen? Are you going to come bail me out?
We've gone over this. The problem is, the mail does not deliver on the Doty.
I have an address, but I can't put a driver's license on a post office box.
And there's no electricity out there.
Right.
So, we assigned you the address.
Exactly.
But-
But you didn't do all the steps. Here's the step you did not do.
Okay.
It says it right here, police, you're fire, none of them signed up. This is the township next to you, Ira. This is what they do.
Give me a call tomorrow and I'll-
Yeah, I'm giving you a call, but this is July, August.
We'll do those steps.
I won't have a license next week.
Okay.
If I get pulled over, what's going to happen? You going to come bail me out?
I'm sure we'll figure it out if you give me a chance tomorrow. Any other public comments?
Hello. My name's Chuck Kukovka, 8024 Middle Channel Drive, and I just wanted to let this board know that after I attended the HIDA meeting on January 31st, HIDA President Harold Bane asked me if I wanted to serve on the HIDA board, and I said I'd think about it, and Harold said that if I wanted to serve, that I should email Supervisor Artie Bryson. So, I thought about it, and the following day, February 1st, I emailed Supervisor Bryson to let him know that I was interested in serving on the board, and I included a copy of my resume. I didn't, when I didn't get a response, I said in a second email on February 9th, Supervisor Bryson, but I included the full board, all of you as well. I expressed my interest in serving on the HIDA board, and again, I included my resume. I never got a response, or was notified whether I'd be considered as a candidate to serve on the HIDA board until the day after I spoke at the HIDA meeting on February 16th. On the next day, I did get an email from Artie Bryson saying that he had received my email, he said that he had forwarded to, he said, I did forward it to my board, he also said, the posting said that applications had to be in before February 1st. He said I could have gotten around that, but I did not get any feedback from my board to do so. So, you know, I just wanted to come here and introduce myself, because most of you probably don't know who I am. But I grew up vacationing on Harson's Island since I was a kid, and we bought our home in 1988. I've loved living on Harson's Island, and I wanted to help HIDA achieve its goals, as they express on their website. On the island, I was elected to two terms, with the Harson's Island-St. Clair Flats Association. Two years I was also the recording secretary. I've served on 15 different joint board of directors, and I was elected to be the chairman on nine of those boards. I'm currently the treasurer of the Middle Channel Improvement Association on Bruckner Island, which is on Harson's Island, and I serve on the Board of Directors of the Wayne County Sheriff Youth and Senior Education Fund. So, again, I just wanted to introduce myself, because in the future I might apply again, so thank you.
Good. Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
It's me again. Judith Campbell, 6052 St. Pierre Drive, and my same question, so I don't fall through the track, the cracks, because I have not heard from you. The date when the board will be revoting on the issue of the emergency guidelines procedures?
I'm not sure yet.
We're still waiting on it.
Yep.
Okay, I'll check at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. Dennis Schmansky, 5194 Middle Channel. Here tonight, I'm representing the Harson's Island-St. Clair Flats Association. We have the, like you had spoken or said about the May 18th, 19th for the island cleanup. You know, last year, we caught a little bit of flak from what was being burned in the burn pit, and I talked to Lance, and we're in agreements, as long as we can keep everybody else in line, is that the only thing we really want to burn is wood, no mattresses or couches or anything like that. And then, two, you know, Lance brought up a good point as far as, you know, these people are bringing boats and campers that we can't just put into the dumpster, that maybe we can just tell these people that we can't accept these anymore. I don't know, but-
Take them right to the landfill.
Right. You know, spend your own money, the 60 bucks. But that's it. Just wanted to get that out on the record. Thank you.
Thanks. I actually talked to Wendy from Eagle last week about the burning over there, too. We were actually laughing about it, so thanks. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Okay. We'll go into the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda the minutes of the board meeting of February 5th, 24. The board approved checks in between meetings and payroll reports.
Support. Motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion-
I'm opposed.
Oh, okay.
About the payroll, you know how I feel about that.
Okay. I thought you said yes, but okay.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Unfinished business, I have HIDA appointments, and again, I'm bringing back to the board Kevin Garrity and Robert Reno. As before, I did see Kevin back there, right? Is Bob here or no? I didn't see him. Yeah, he's, he's on vacay or something. So, I'll make a motion that the board confirms the appointment of Kevin Garrity and Robert Reno to the HIDA board. Support. Okay. A motion of support. Any discussion?
Based on what the gentleman that came up and inquired about the HIDA, I'm in a position to give him another opportunity and postpone this for another meeting, so we can look at this in more earnest, as to what we have now. Got a lot of flak, I'm getting calls about it, and I want to give everybody their just do. Right now, we're not doing it, as far as I'm concerned.
If he's not part of the Harson's Island-St. Clair Flats Association, they actually have two appointments plus a third member at large.
He's not part of them now, he said he served there before.
That would be an opportunity for him also. So.
I mean, we've, Bob had a chance, and Keith, to be at four different meetings, and I'm glad that Kevin's here today, but Bob hasn't showed up to one meeting. Both of them have signs in their yard, you know. Of course, the millage didn't pass. If the millage would have passed without any, I mean, if we could have gotten $5 round trip ferry tickets in a state-run system without the millage, HIDA would have been heroes. But, I mean, when they don't show up at these meetings and demonstrate their dedication and answer questions, do we really want to, I mean, Chuck has been to several meetings. We know these two gentlemen have one thing in mind, and that's their personal interest about living on the North Channel, and that's-
No. You said "we."
Well-
That's your opinion, right?
I believe.
Okay.
And then, did anyone answer this lady's letter, Vicki, that sent to us?
I did.
Right. Well, I mean, I answered it, too. Did you guys read it, or, I mean, it says, you told her you cannot recuse yourself from HIDA's own rules, but, you know, HIDA was formed in 97, there was no Bryson family members on the board, and it's true that rules say that the township supervisor appoints, but three years ago, when the former president, HIDA, you know, of HIDA-Margy confronted you, you said you would recuse yourself, you know, if it had something to do. I thought that's what I heard at that meeting. And then, you know, I mean, I don't know why you think you're bringing in who you think is best, when, you know, we've already got someone on the North Channel. I know Jan Zobral, is this the last name, said we don't have representation of the North Channel, but we do, the president's on the North Channel. You told her there's a roadmap for HIDA's success. They called me and asked me, what is this roadmap? I don't know what that is, but Chuck's been very involved with the community. I think he'd be a good candidate. I mean, you told him that you forwarded his information to us. I didn't get it. Did you get it? I mean, I heard it. Oh, you didn't forward it to me.
Well, at that time, you were recused.
Oh, well, I'm just, we know exactly why these two gentlemen are being appointed by you.
We do?
I do. I have a very strong opinion about it, and I don't think it's in, I mean, they're clearly against what HIDA was trying to do.
Have you talked to them personally, one-on-one?
I've talked to Kevin before.
One-on-one, personal, okay.
So, I think that, considering the results of the millage election, I think the island residents have spoke very clearly that they're not real happy with the direction that the HIDA board is going.
They don't want to pay, that's what they're clear about, I think.
You know, with that being said, I think that Kevin and Robert, I spoke with both of them personally, I think they bring some common sense, much-needed common sense to that board, in my opinion. Especially Mr. Reno has an extensive executive business background that I think that would be very helpful, so I think that these two guys would be excellent for these appointments.
Did you talk to Chuck?
Chuck who? No, I didn't.
The man who came up here and spoke. Well, Artie supposedly sent you his information, why wouldn't you contact him and interview him?
These are the two gentlemen that were put up for appointment, and whether we like it or not, the bylaws from HIDA say that the supervisor of Clay Township brings the appointees up.
But the whole board, just like when you were put into place, John.
You know what? Don't go there either, because there was a whole scale of candidates that were brought forward along with me. It wasn't John DeBoyer put in place.
They were brought forward at the very last minute, even though there's-
Let's stay, let's stay on point here. You're going off on tabs, as usual.
I'm talking about how things are done here, and how things are done is, the board is supposed to be able to have all the information and be able to help make the decisions, but it's, what, you know, we don't get the information. All right. Well, you're going to appoint who you're going to appoint, so let's just get it over with.
Anybody have anything else? Roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
No.
Okay. Next, our new business, we have a public hearing for the McComb cell tower rezoning. What happened, it went to, they wanted to rezone, a conditional rezone for a cell tower from residential to light industrial, because that's what we say has to be for a cell tower, and conditional means it can only have a cell tower on it. If it's anything else, or the cell tower comes back down, it goes back to residential. The planning commission denied it, and then the proper channels, it goes up to St. Clair County Planning Commission. They approved it, and for anything rezoning, then it comes to our board. The planning commission is just a recommending body. The planner suggested to the plan, our planner suggested to the planning commission it gets postponed until the cell tower company can bring up more information. I think they wanted a site plan, but the problem is, they're just talking about the zoning. If the zoning gets changed, then the process would be, the cell tower company would have to go to our zoning board of appeals and get a height variance and a side setback variance. And then, once they get those, if they get those variances, then they have to go back to our planning commission and get the site plan approved. They were looking at, I'm not sure exactly, but, so the first step of this process is to get the zoning approved. Problem is, the state took away local control for cell towers as they did for just recently wind and solar farms. We don't have much control over that anymore. The only way, we do have control, again, under the site plan and the setbacks as far as heights and the side. We really don't have too much control on denying them the zoning. Alls they have to do is say, we don't have any other viable places in Clay Township that would satisfy the needs, which they actually did in the minutes of the, on the planning commission. Our attorney basically said, they'll take us to court and probably win. I don't really, myself, see there's a need to have the public hearing, but if you wanted to postpone making a decision on the zoning, changing the zoning, that's okay, until we get some information from the applicant. Our planner did recommend that we postpone, the planning commission postponed it until we can get further information. And I got an email today from our planner that said that he is going to, he would- an email today from our planner that said that he is going to, he would recommend approval as soon as applicants apply the necessary information to us, so you can take it from there.
Keep in mind, this is all coming about because they are decommissioning a cell tower that is 1,500 feet away from it.
Yep. Yeah, they're decommissioning a cell tower where there's three major carriers on it, 1,500 feet away, and where it's at, they cannot reconstruct a new one. And so, they are applying for this other location to install a cell tower, and-
So, you're talking about the same location that they wanted at the planning commission?
Yeah.
For this tower?
Yep. To, you can't use "not in my backyard" argument anymore for not denying a cell tower, basically, so.
Well, I did, I did request that they bring back some data showing that there's no evidence of radiation or any other unseen radiation waves in that area. And of course, I haven't seen any of that yet. And that was a concern of some of the residents.
And there's one already out 1,500 feet away, though?
Yep.
They're decommissioning it.
They're decommission-
So, they've got to replace it.
So, all the signal that came from that tower will no longer be coming from that tower? If they don't replace one, then all that signal is just-
I also brought up the possibility of that cell tower, I don't know about the other one, but disruption of wildlife. And I don't know if the DNR is part of this or not, but they should be. And there's plenty of DNR property for them to choose from.
Yeah, they won't, DNR won't allow them to put them on their property.
So, why should a resident let DNR do it?
Well, the resident wants to. So, I mean, we can kick the can down the road a little bit if you want, wait for more information. It's really up to the Board.
Did you start this conversation by saying our planning department rejected this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they rejected it.
They were advised by our planner to postpone it?
Right.
But then, they in turn rejected it?
And they rejected it.
And that went up to county?
They didn't really give us in the motion a specific reason why they, it was rejected, which will not hold up in court. But in the conversation, they were worried about the heights and the setback, side setbacks on it, but really, that's dealt with not here during the zoning change, that's dealt with during the site plan, and that's for the ZBA to deal with as far as the variances. It's not really the planning commission question at this point in time. It will be questions, you know, later in the process.
But whether our planning commission approves or denies, it does then move to the county planning, and the county planning did approve it. We just haven't gotten that paperwork back from them yet.
I guess we should wait until we get it back.
I'm okay with postponing. I just want to bring it up to your attention.
Are you suggesting we postpone the public hearing?
No, I'm just postpone the whole question of the rezoning. I don't think there's really a need for a public hearing, because we can't deny it. I mean, we can get a bunch of people in here that don't like it, if you want.
So, what happens if we do deny it? Do we get sued?
Yeah, we'll get sued.
Let's get sued.
They're familiar with going to Circuit Court, very familiar.
I bet.
With going to Circuit Court. And I've looked at many cases, and they pretty much win them all.
What carrier is on this tower?
T-Mobile, Verizon, and AT&amp;T.
Yeah. And they have proof, or they've shown, if this, once this tower is decommissioned, that the service of those three carriers will be segregated quite a bit, which would affect, you know, doing business, internet, public safety, you know, they do the whole gamut.
I'll make a motion to approve the 8101 Macomb cell tower conditional rezoning to I-1.
Do we have support? So, I want to make another motion.
I'll support it.
Okay.
Let's talk about it more.
Okay, we have motion and support.
Does our liaison have anything more to add? Trustee Burchard?
What was that?
Do you have anything else to add?
Join the commission.
Per your planning commission meeting?
No, other than what I just said. You know, we had numerous residents that were in the area and, that live in the area, they don't want it. And my full thrust was, you know, invading the wildlife habitat and disruption, and disruption of the habitat. I thought the DNR would have jumped all over it, but apparently not. They should jump out there when you're disrupting deer.
Is there really nowhere else you can go? Is there really nowhere else you can go?
Yep. Well, I'm just reading the minutes of the planning commission, that they stated that there are no other sites available. It was discussed amongst the planning commission members, and their agent got up and said, "There's no other sites available." They did say that the proposed location of the tower is 250 feet from any existing home.
How tall is it?
Hundred-
Well, that's to be determined by the zoning board.
It's taller than the-
Yeah, that would be the ZBA, and the agent also said, stated that the area will lose coverage for emergency services, public service, internet, and business operations once the other tower is decommissioned, that they would go back, come back, and seek variances through, for height and setbacks to the ZBA, and then they would come back to the planning commission to get their final site plan approved.
Do you know when it's being decommissioned, like, how much time we have?
It was in here. It was in 2004.
Spring or early summer.
Yeah, spring or early summer.
It's pretty quick.
Yeah. That's why I don't want to-
So, is the new tower going to be exactly the same as the old tower?
It's going to be taller.
How much taller?
It's in there somewhere, but it was significantly taller.
Again, that's up to the zoning board, right? So, we can't base our approval or our denial based off of-
No, I'm just curious, what compares to what's that?
But this is how the planning commission, I think, got a little bit tripped up and just denied it. They denied it based off of things that weren't really their purpose to deny.
Right. There's going to be more apparatus hanging from the top of it, so.
Yeah. Like I say, it's a conditional, a conditional zoning change. In other words, it can only be for the cell tower. If the cell tower doesn't go up, the zoning stays residential as it is now, or if the cell tower is removed, or decommissioned, it goes back to being residential. And I do believe if-
That's by default at the township level?
Yeah. Well, that's how the conditional, yeah, zone, that's how it's written out.
Well, keep in mind, too, that this company that's putting this out, have already run conduit, wire, all the way from 26 Mile Road down. So, they're already in the process of putting it up, basically.
Basically, we can't do anything about it because of the state taking over control, right?
Yep.
So, it sounds like we're fighting a losing battle.
I wish the state didn't take control over it, but they did. So, it kind of ties our hands. There's another point I was going to bring up, but-
There was some argument at the planning commission meeting for spot zoning, however-
That doesn't-
That doesn't apply when there is more of a public benefit than there is an owner benefit to property when it's changed?
Yep.
Being as this is-
Spot zoning is not an argument.
Being as this is a public utility, that's not the case.
So, and what was our planner's opinion? The planner's opinion was to approve it. In my email, he was just waiting for additional information, and it was presented at the, at the meeting, that, you know, there was no other options for them to put a thing up, a tower up. And the service would be segregated if, if, once the other one is decommissioned. And he said, you know, that he would revise, he wasn't asked for a postponement, and actually, the applicant asked for a postponement at our planning commission, which they said, "No, we're just going to deny it." But now that our planner has this information, he would recommend that it gets approved. And quite frankly, our attorney said, "I don't want to represent, I don't want to fight that battle against the blues." So, okay. So, we have motion.
And support.
And support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
No.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
No.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have to appoint, we do this every year, I think, a delegate to SEMCOG, and I go to quite a few of those meetings, so I'd be willing to be that delegate again.
Board, I'll make a motion to appoint our supervisor, Artie Bryson, as our delegate to SEMCOG Southeastern Michigan Council of Government for 2024.
Support. Motion and support.
How much time does that take away from doing your duties here?
Oh, I don't know. I go to a meeting every couple months, and I write them a lot. I probably have seven letters of support for our different things coming from SEMCOG.
Yeah, I know, I see a lot coming through myself, but-
So, Mark, would you like to do it?
I may.
I've been to the meetings, it's pretty-
I've got an extra hour of the week that I can handle it.
It's pretty interesting. It's usually like an afternoon.
Yeah, it's afternoon, usually in the city or someplace, so.
We weren't even members for a while.
Are any of the other trustees expressing interest in it? Maureen, John?
Not me.
Cindy?
No, thanks.
Me either.
Mark, would you like to be the alternate?
What, you want to be an alternate delegate?
Did I stick my foot in the hole?
It's a fun meeting, eh?
You can go to it, whether you are or not.
I will be an alternate delegate.
Okay.
Okay? I will.
Well, you want to amend your motion to have Mark as the alternate delegate?
Yes, and we will amend the motion to recommend trustee Mark Burchard be appointed our alternate for the SEMCOG delegate for the period of 2024.
Support.
Thank you.
Motion and support. Any more discussion? All in favor, signal five by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have Old Club.
It's beautiful view up there.
They're asking for a permit for fireworks.
And they've been doing this for how many years?
Quite a while. July 6, and they got a rain day, it's July 7.
Twenty-five-plus years' experience.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to allow the Old Club fireworks display on July 6 with a rain date of July 7, 2024.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, sing the five by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Is anyone here from the Old Club?
Huh?
I said, "Does anyone hear from the Old Club?" No?
Oh, I should have asked, but no, I didn't. All right, we have resolution, charitable gaming resolution for AIM Educational Foundation. Let's do these together. And a charitable gaming resolution for the Turtle Project charitable gaming. We have to, for anybody gets anything to do bingo or any kind of fundraiser, they want our approval now.
Is anybody here from either of those organizations?
Laura, anyone, you're here from-
Both of them?
They're both here?
Yep, they're both here. You're from-
I'm Renee Byerline, 2420 North Channel, and I'm from the AIM Educational Foundation. I'm the president of the organization. So, we're trying to raise money for funding projects for educators and/or giving scholarships to future educators. At this point, we don't have much money because we've barely been an organization for about a year, but we have several thousand dollars right now. And our first official function of charitable gaming will be in Bay City in, at the end of April, so we'd appreciate your approval on this. And I am a resident of Harson's Island, so.
Do you, do you open it up just anywhere in the state, or?
Well, we have, we usually have an annual function of either a convention or a conference. And so, this year's will be at our convention, our biannual convention. So, but we do, of course, accept donations. If anybody wants to make some, I'll be happy to take your money.
Reason I ask-
It's a 501(c)(3), so.
Good. Reason I ask, I'm in the Elginac Clay Foundation. We have the Joe Cami Scholarship, which, oh, I think it's 2,500 bucks a year, and that has to go to someone that's going into education likewise, so.
Right, yes.
So, we get a lot of applicants for that, so, okay.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution-
Yeah, go ahead.
-2024-05, the AIM, A.I.M. Educational Foundation charitable gaming license.
Thank you.
Motion and support. Any more discussion?
Are you representing, representing just AIM Educational and not the Turtle Project?
Yes, he's going to talk about the Turtle, yes.
What type of gaming and charitable gaming do you do?
We'll just have raffles at the-
And where do you usually hold those at?
We usually have them wherever in the state. It's a state organization, so wherever in the state, we're having our annual gathering for all the people like me who are in the thing. Last year, we were at Port Huron in the spring. This year, it's Bay City. Next year, we don't know yet. We haven't set that up, so.
So, you're a 501(c)(4) or 3?
We are, 501(c)(3), yes. Thank you.
C3? We have motion and support?
We do.
Okay, roll call, please.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes, motion passed. Thank you. Next, we have the Turtle Project.
Here's your resolution.
Man? She's quick. And we're building ramps.
You're welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
How you guys doing? I'm Luke Stevenson. My mailing address is 8390 Marl Road. I also have a 501(c) organization. I am a, I'm an alumni of Elginac High School. I coach with, with another alumni of Elginac High School. We coach a 12U baseball team. Parents encouraged us to handle fundraising the right way, so we went overboard and opened a 501(c), and we're really trying to help these, these parents out with offsetting costs. So, what we did, we opened this up, so we're going to try to get tax-deductible donations to our team fund. It's a Detroit Prospects team, so what we're doing is, we're building a working-class family fund that is going to purchase sporting equipment for families that sort of fall under that umbrella. So, that's sort of the organization in its future state. We're, right now, just trying to get it going with tax-deductible donations. I wonder why it's called the Turtle Project. About, I suspect maybe 20, 25% of our revenue is going to be from holding turtle racing events, so.
Turtle racing.
Stay tuned, they're coming, they're coming, summer 2024. So, y'all, stay tuned, but we're, we're focused on, on sort of ironing all that out and kind of sifting through the bureaucracy to be able to do that legally and responsibly. So, this is, this is kind of- So, this is, this is kind of brings me here. Um, so, yeah, I'm seeking a resolution to file for a local civic organization so I can push it forward to the state.
Can you give us, uh, insight scoop on the hot turtle?
Yeah. No, that'd be, that'd be insider information, so...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see how it goes, but, yeah.
All right.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 2024-06, the Turtle Project charitable gaming license.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion?
What'd you say your name was?
Luke Stevenson.
Why don't you give me your, uh, write your name down for me and your phone number, please?
Yeah, of course.
Be in contact with you. I'm with the Lions Club and...
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, we can help you out, maybe, for some. Why don't you email me, I'll forward to Mark your contact.
Yeah, we can set some things up, and, and it's all, right now, we have the fund directed to, uh, to Detroit Prospects, but there's definitely potential to fundraise for local sort of, uh, I guess, sporting or, or organizations too through it. Uh, but right now, it, it kind of spurred out of just coaching a 12U team, but it could grow to something that could benefit the community more immediately, so...
Our baseball team in Elginac's looking good this year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If you can't use real turtles, I have a way to do it with wooden turtles with strings, so...
Yeah, well, we gotta see. It'll, it'll be easier to hold them in the summer when it's like, well, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out, but, uh, it's just trying to get the...
There's an alternate way, so...
Yes, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, any more discussion? Let's, uh, roll call, please.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
You wanna...
There you go, Luke.
Yeah. Next, we have a resolution to convey bottom lands. Um, now, part, sometimes Eagle is making you buy the bottom lands of, uh, property. You wanna put like a boathouse on or something. And before they will convey it, we have to approve it, the, uh, resolution. This is down by Star Island, down in the flat side of...
They're gonna do that with Seawall as well?
No, no. Bottom lands. Yep, so we've...
You mentioned boathouses.
Yeah, we've done this, and I think we got enough. Do we have another one coming?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, we do this every year.
Yeah, we get them, so... It's a requirement that Eagles makes us do. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-08 for the conveyance of bottom lands.
Uh, you need support?
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, roll call, please.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, um, as I mentioned before, I'm, uh, gonna apply for, uh, DNR Trust Fund Development Grant, which they allow us to go for four hundred thousand now. And that would require, um, a match of at least twenty-five percent. I usually tell them we're gonna match twenty-six percent because we get two more points for a few dollars less. And, um, as you recall, Eagle now gave us the permit, uh, and, uh, I'm actually getting ready to submit that in the next week or two. The first four, well, five thousand, five hundred thousand would go for, uh, the parking lot and the culvert. Um, and, uh, we gotta put a, a, an elevated dock going all the way out to the Crispin Drain. And, uh, it'll, it'll have a, a handicapped kayak launch out there incorporated with a, a bird washing place and some few fishing stations out there. And, um, eventually, we'd, uh, put in a bathroom with a septic field, uh, to service that, too. So, this is probably gonna take, the, the half million would be phase one and probably be some more on, you know, next round, um, once we get, you know, the exact costs of, of the, of the group. The parking lot's gonna be gravel, except for where there's handicap parking. It has to be paved. So, we'll have two, it's not gonna be big. It's gonna be probably a ten lot, ten parking spaces with, uh, two of them being handicapped, so...
Eagle has signed off on this?
So, I need the board, uh, resolution for me to apply for the grant.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-09, Crispin Blue Way, uh, Development Grant.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion?
This, the resolution, is it supposed to say twenty-six percent there? Cause you got twenty...
No, no, I'll write the grant for twenty-six.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
And that's something that gets put in the next year's budget?
Yes.
But we're kind of committing a hundred thousand to it now.
Right. Okay, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes. Next, uh, we have the St. Clair County Parks and Rec. Um, they've been working hard on, uh, um, getting our beach park, North Channel Beach Park, uh, being developed. And, uh, so I reported to the board before, they, they did purchase the, um, I'd just say, the yellow house next to it, and now they have a total of twelve acres for this park. And, uh, they wanted our approval for the master plan that they have presented so far. And once we do that, they're gonna start, start the permit process, and may the shovels hit the ground soon. Is there anyone here from the Parks and Rec? Um, I know Cindy knows what's going on with them, but, but like I said, they, uh, they wanted our, our blessing, and they're going to, uh, go forward with their, um, the development.
Who's, who's been attending the meetings, uh, from this board or...
Well, I have some, and Cindy Babbage is actually on the, the Parks and Rec board.
Right. This thing ready to go, Cindy?
It sure is.
Okay, shall I need?
Yep.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the North Channel Preliminary Master Plan Rendering, stamped 212 of 2024.
Support.
Motion and support. Now, I know they've received some grant monies, and I think total, they, they have about a million bucks, pretty close to that, committed for this phase. And they're basically gonna start building from the road, you know, parking, like we, we would be there, the road back towards the water. So, um, I think it's gonna be a great asset to our community, and it's gonna be another jewel for Southern St. Clair County.
Have we published this, uh, site plan at all, anywhere?
Yeah, I, I've had it out, and I think it's on the back wall, and I know they have too.
Yeah, I would encourage everyone to take a look at it. It's quite, uh... Get some music on the parks out there.
Huh?
Music at the park.
Hey, people, look at it. We'll look at it. We're gonna have to have a hula, a hula party.
You're gonna bring palm trees on?
A Hawaiian party out there on the beach, maybe. But, uh, they're, they're gonna give us a lot of latitude on holding events there, so...
Good deal.
Yep. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, uh, resolution adopting new poverty exemption, uh, guidelines. Um, basically, we have to, the states change their definition of, uh, of, uh, of poverty, and, uh, we, we pa, we have to set the limits with those are, uh, if, if it's changed. And, uh, um, so if someone's pleading poverty exemption, they wanna get out of their payroll or paying property tax. Um, I believe in the past, they allowed us to either exempt them totally a hundred percent, fifty percent, or twenty-five percent. And now, that they'll give us the right to, um, potential of seventy-five percent exemption. And, uh, that's basically what this is stating, stating. And if anyone has any questions, I'm sure Sherry can answer them, but I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-07, Poverty Exemption Policy Guidelines.
Is this something good for somebody in poverty?
It's support. Well, i- it's something that we ha, we have to be in line with, with the state. I don't know if you recall, but, uh, when I first got in office, I, I didn't even know what a poverty exemption was. And people would apply, and at the time, our board, uh, the, um, Board of Review, they were giving away like over fifty. And I couldn't believe it. I was actually pounding my head against the back wall back there in frustration what. And, uh, then, then I got into it more, and, you know, we, we said, you know, some of these people needs at least some skin in the game. I'm all about if someone's truly in poverty and needs a help up for a year or two, um, but it shouldn't be a way of life. And, uh, so we adopted, uh, the exemption guidelines, and that's just amending it per the state now. Now, what, what are we averaging now, Sherry, three or four? Yeah, we get three or four a year now.
So, really, nothing's changing other one, other than we're aligning ourselves with the state.
Yep, and, and, and basically, they would say, you know, we could, we could allow them a hundred percent exemption, uh, fifty percent or twenty-five percent exemption. But now, well, it's changed, uh, seventy-five percent now also, as far as the exemption.
So, when this comes into play, the board doesn't really vote on it. You guys just look at everything and do it, right?
Right, the, uh, Board of Review. And then I have to partake in it.
And they look into all their liquid assets and...
All that. They, they gotta give us what, you know, their expenses and, uh, there, there's a definite line of where, where the poverty, poverty line is, you know, revenue minus expenses, and it's pretty clear cut now.
And they make sure no one else is living in the home with them, right?
That's not in one of these documents, is it?
Well, no, the change is seventy-five. I entertain a motion.
We have it.
Oh, do I?
The motion and support.
Yeah, I'm sorry, motion and support. Roll call, please.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the DPW water meter antennas. We need more antennas. Hey, Lance? So, we have to buy, uh, antenna and extensions so we can read them automatically.
Yeah, these are, these are antennas that are mounted on the meter pit on the outside that plug into the ant, into the meter itself.
We're looking at three hundred of them. That will cost nineteen thousand five hundred.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, why three hundred?
Just for...
Are, are these on pits that are...
Existing.
Yeah, but I mean, is it like weak signals or...
Back, the back country.
Just ones that are way up?
It will not...
So, they're not needed for every, uh, account in the town?
Not every account. The closer accounts...
Just for the difficult ones?
Correct.
Okay.
For Steyer, down in Steyer.
Nothing, I'm just poking fun at you.
Down in Steyer for Steyer Sub and the back country and Harson's Island.
So, is that, is three hundred, does that fix the problem?
Not all of it.
You'll have to get additional? Okay.
Yeah.
So, the original electronic water meeting, water reading, um, devices, and we approved one bill for that. All this other stuff is auxiliary to the original, uh, when John was on the, the water board, uh, a couple of years ago?
Originally, all those, well, that was for the original batch of meters that we bought. And we only bought a couple hundred antennas at that time. And now, what we're finding is that some of the meters, the, the pits hold water, and once the water's over, the antennas, they don't broadcast.
All right, good. Thank you for that explanation.
Not wrong.
There's an internal antenna, Mark. There's an internal antenna in each meter.
Right, right, yeah, I know that.
And when it's weakened by water or what, what have you, you have to put the external on, right, Lance?
Yes.
To, to, to strengthen that signal.
Well, you, you showed us here a couple, uh, months ago, a antenna that fit on top of the water meter, right?
It fits on, well, there's one...
Is that the external one?
There is one that goes on the m, the meter itself. That's what's considered actually an internal one. That's the one that's would sit down in the pit. As long as the water's not over that, it'll broadcast. But it, some of them don't broadcast far enough either, cause when you get to the outlying spots of either middle channel or south channel, like on McDonald and all that out, that way, it won't pick it up either.
How many more do you think we need, other than the three hundred?
Hmm, I don't know ex, exactly at this point.
They have to connect them all to the new tower going up, right?
Yeah, it looks like...
Yeah.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the DPW request for water meter antennas from EJP in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. It's a budgeted line item coming from 591-746.
Support.
All right, motion and support. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Who supported that?
Me.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yep.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Okay, motion, cap, passes. Next, we have DPW, uh, they need to buy another pressure washer. Their other one imploded. It's like, how old was that, John? Twenty-five years? Hundred, hundred years?
It was the original pressure washer. When we moved from here down there.
Probably thirty-five years old.
Probably thirty-five years.
God, I was thinking a commercial pressure washer would be more than thirty-seven hundred.
Well, I shopped around. I, I did find, you, you see what I have for quotes and that and...
Yeah. That's what I was thinking on the antennas. I'm like, wow, they're probably only gonna get more, and you got a good deal on those, too, so...
Yeah, he said that he would freeze that cost on the antennas, too, for right now for us, so...
Good.
He didn't say.
I get that on the email.
So, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the DPW pressure washer for three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars from line, lines 590-933 and 591-933.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion?
I was just looking at the quotes. It looks like you got one for thirty-six fifty for a four thousand PSI versus the three, thirty-five hundred. Am I missing something?
The difference is the gallons per minute.
Oh, okay.
One is rated at three point five, and one is rated at four gallons per minute. The four gallons per minute gives you better, so...
I just wondered why you chose that one, okay.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. And opposed. Okay, motion carries. Next, I got a whole slew of, uh, yep, thank you, uh, work orders for the county road. They toll up to ninety-six thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and ten cents.
Eighty-nine dollars and ten cents? Eighty-nine dollars.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, these are basically for general maintenance, for mowing, uh, limestone haul, and, you know, crack, rubberizing the cracks, uh, shoulder patch repair, um, and, so forth and so on. I did cut back on two roads, getting on the island, actually, getting limestone because the people live there say, we don't want any more stone because the road's too high and it all drains down to as before. Uh, four or five years ago, the, the road actually had was, uh, had a trough. Now, it's a crown, so we're, we're, where we're at. So, I think I cut about fifteen thousand dollars off this bill. Um...
I'll make a motion to approve the St. Clair County Road Commission Maintenance Work Orders for ninety-six... I'll make a motion to approve the St. Clair County Road Commission Maintenance Work Orders for $96,089.10.
Support. Okay, motion and support. We will be having, I know we're going to do Phase Two of our ditching project on La Croix. We're by the fire hall on the island. And we'll be paving Fruit Road. So we're responsible for 50% of that and that's going to be about 90,000. So that's what we're going to be looking at next year, so, budget, so.
It's pretty much uses most of our budget, doesn't it, for the roads?
Yeah.
Well, we don't really have a budget for roads anymore.
We don't have a budget.
Don't have much, yeah.
No, yeah, we don't get any money funding for roads at all.
But you put some in the budget though.
Yeah, so.
What did we put in there? Was it 100?
Uh, this year, if I remember right, is about 150.
Okay.
You know, next year is probably going to have to be about 200, so.
Well, you pick the minimum stuff you have to do, so it's great.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen.
Yes.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Yes.
Maureen Boire. Everybody said yes.
Did we all vote?
Yep.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next, we have a new hire for our fire department, Alan Stout. Did I say that right? All right. It's a pretty easy one. Sometimes I really butcher it.
Yeah, we pass along what's happened.
Yeah, we get lots of balls and?
Good evening. I'm requesting permission from Township Board of Trustees to hire a new part-time firefighter, Alan Joseph Kenneth Stout. He's currently employed with Detroit Fire Department and he serves on an engine company. Alan's been with the City of Detroit since 2022. He's also a state certified EMT, Michigan certified. We've interviewed him and he's also passed his background check.
What are you doing, Alan?
Great, how are you, sir?
Oh, normal. I always ask this at every question or every employee we hire, do you know how to swim? Okay, because if you didn't know how to swim, we'd be buying you some noodles or something. Does anybody have any questions for Alan?
Where do you live at, Alan?
I live in Warren.
Warren?
Yes.
Come up here often?
A few times, yes.
Be there, be here more often than that, huh?
Yes, I will be.
And you're with the Detroit Fire Department?
Yes.
What station are you out of?
Engine 56, which is at Seven Ryan.
Well, the calls here are going to be a little different than what you get down there.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Alan at this time?
Yeah, a question for chief.
Yeah.
Chief, what background agencies are you using?
We use the, Dave Burley from the Clay Township Police Department. He does background checks for the police department. And we follow their guidelines. Our, it's changed a little bit because they have different areas that they do backgrounds on the police officers. But he does our backgrounds.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Do we have a motion? Not yet.
We do not.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the Clay Township Fire Department new hire, part-time Alan Scout. I'm sorry, Alan Stout.
Okay, motion and support.
Like Stout Street.
Any other discussion?
Who would support that?
Mark.
Mark.
I support, yeah.
Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, Alan. All right, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Yep. All right, we have fire ladder testing to the tune of $5,093.85. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ladder testing for $5,093.85 from line 206971.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of ladder testing. Motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our municipal emergency service functional test for $1,790. I will entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the municipal emergency services functional test in the amount of $1,790, coming from line item 206-765.
I'll support. Motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a quote to get our fireboat repainted by Sensation Boats for $4,625. Knowing them, it's probably not much more than the cost of the paint. They do a good job and take care of us.
All that has to be specialized paint on a?
Yes.
Rubberized craft.
And it will last a lot, lot longer.
And it definitely appears to need it.
The sun does beat it up pretty bad. It sits out in the marina.
Did we get any other quotes at all?
No, I did not.
Important for the maintenance.
Does this stay in the water any amount of time?
It stays in from probably April until the end of?
Eight, nine months.
Yeah.
I don't think you took it out till October.
October, November, October, November.
Depending on the weather.
So is that an anti-fall on the bottom, Charlie?
Yes, it is. It's got copper in it, so it prevents the electrolysis to eat the bottom of the boat. Because that boat's aluminum too, aluminum all.
It works like a zinc plate.
Zinc plate.
I'll make a motion to approve the Sensation, or repaint, repainting the boat for, boat two, for $4,625 out of line number 206-971.
I'll support it.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion, what?
Nay.
Okay. All right, motion passes. Next, we have Lexipol. They're going to want to help us out, write a Homeland Security grant for, to get a new fire boat, which I think we desperately need. And they quoted us a cost of about $4,800 to do so. I don't have, I haven't had luck writing these grants, but they seem to have more of a success rate and?
What's the total cost of the boat?
The boat that we have now?
No, the, no, the new one.
The new one's about $750,000.
Yeah. It's about three quarters of a million.
Yeah. It's basically a fire truck on water.
Yep.
Wow.
And?
Could use it.
Now that they're using, or they're closing down the St. Clair Shores Coast Guard Station and they're going to be relying more heavily on our local resources, I'm really going to be pushing for this grant hard. And like I say, I got a phone call scheduled for Senator Peters about that Coast Guard Station on Friday. And I will tell him to look out for our Homeland Security grant because he chairs Homeland Security.
Good deal.
So.
I did look up online. There were three grants that were awarded here in the state of Michigan. City of Detroit won one. Detroit Fire Department got one for their boat. And then there were two sheriff departments that received grants.
Right.
That for like close to a million or?
Pardon?
Was it also for?
I'm not sure how much. I know Detroit has a fairly large boat that would be close to that. The other ones were around 400,000 and I think the N300,000 were the other.
The sheriffs, they don't do firefighting so much. This is going to be more of a firefighting.
This boat will be, this will have a pump on it, which will pump 1,500 GPM. It'll also give us more room to put a patient inside. Our boat that we have now, we cannot put our patient, well, we can, but it's pretty cramped space inside the cabin of the boat. And when it's fallout, we don't really have a heater in there to keep us warm or anybody else, so.
So yes, I don't like the boat because it's top-heavy, our current boat.
Yeah.
I'll tell you flat out, it's top-heavy. And I get worried about them going out in rough water in it.
Are you, are you going to be able to move that boat at all, as far as sale?
I'm sure we would be able to sell it to somewhere like an inland lake or like a smaller port or something that would probably take that boat where they don't have to go out in rough water. It gets rough out here. I'm sure you guys have been out there.
Yeah.
When is the grant due? You know, when?
Homeland, they're May, aren't they?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we would know by October or something like that, maybe?
Yeah. September, October, well, September's fiscal year and 30 September is the end of the fiscal year, October.
We usually get a pretty good idea before that.
Because you, you usually write all the grants, so this will be kind of a unique situation.
I haven't had luck writing this grant.
Yeah.
And they have.
Do we have any idea what the likelihood of receiving this grant would be or is it total crap shoot?
It's crap shoot.
Well, I think with St. Clair Shores closing down, maybe we'd have a better?
I'm sure.
Yep.
Plus, knowing the captain of the port helps us a little bit.
Yeah, we know the captain of the Coast Guard, the port, and he knows they're closing down. He knows they're going to be relying more on us. And he also knows our boat sucks.
Is there, is there a match or would it be?
No. So I, I'd really like to go for this. I, that's the only way we're going to get a boat is through a grant, so I haven't had luck.
And you said that this person, Lexipol, they've done great.
Yep.
Good success rate?
Yep. What's their success, 80% or?
It's?
For FEMA.
For FEMA, it's 60% countrywide.
Countrywide, right, so.
Have they ever rode any for Clay?
I, yes, they have.
Yeah.
Yes.
They have.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're doing one right now.
So that's the total, 4,800 for the grant?
Yep.
What are they doing right now? I didn't know about that. Did I know about that?
For radios.
Radios.
Oh.
Is that the first one?
That's the next.
Yeah, yeah.
No.
I gave Artie the narrative of it. I think if you read the narrative, you would see that they, they've got their stuff.
Yeah.
They know what they're doing.
Yeah. I added some stuff to it and sent it in for the radios, so with letters of support too. So the question is, do we want to pay $4,800 for Lexipol to write a grant for us for a new boat? Do we have motion? We don't.
I'll make a motion to approve Lexipol for the fire grant, fire boat grant for $4,800 from line 206971.
I'll support. Okay, motion and support. Any more?
I always like it when the treasurer makes the motion to spend money. Oh, good.
Makes you feel better, Mark?
So how much do we pay them to write the radio grant?
I can't remem, we voted on it about a month ago. 38?
29.
29.
2,900 and we got 60 grand, so it seems like a deal, 4,800 to get 750. All right. Did you get support? I supported.
Yeah. Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have accept grant first. This is from the county. And I'm going to give a little narrative first because after we got a couple other things for the county. I talked to, I've been talking to the county, as you guys know, about what they want to do with their ARPA money. And they hired a consultant. And I sent the consultant a whole list of possible things that we could spend ARPA money on. I think there is 12, 13 items on that, on that list. And they came back and one of them, they want to give $60,000 to our police department towards radios, towards communication. And George, have you talked to them? They're going, they want to do another 60,000 for the fire department.
Wait, for our mobiles?
Yep, for the trucks, right. So that'll probably be on our, I just want to tell the board, that'll be on our next, next meeting. And so we're going to get a total from them, 120K for these two things. Then they also came back, their consultant, with recommend, they want to recommending that the county would fund a portable stage for Clay Township and also our outdoor exercise equipment, which I sent them all the details on, the consultant on it. I guess they're concentrating on communications, public safety, and outdoor, outdoor activities. This is all from COVID. And one of the big things with the COVID money that was given out, they wanted to enhance outdoor, safe outdoor activities, which both of these projects, the consultant said that they would, they would entertain. So, all that being said, sorry, Mike, it took so long. The police, they're looking, they want us to approve the agreement that they would give us $60,000 for radios. And it would probably cost us, what, Mike, another 25,000 for?
Well, the total grant for the radios itself and just the actual product is going to come out to the 74,964.62. That is just for the radios, the programming, the software, all the nuts and bolts that come to actually put them on the road and put them into use. The other charge that you see here is going to be a $6,500 charge, which goes to the state for programming. That is something completely separate. Anybody that has a new radio that is put on their 800-megahertz system, you have to pay a $250 programming fee per radio. In the past, it's used, we used to be able to use credits through St. Clair County from when we first started with the 800-megahertz. That has since been depleted, so now each municipality is responsible for this cost. So everything in here is wrapped together. I went back and forth with Commissioner Vanden Bosch, who was fantastic with this. We started off with 50 grand and after beating them up a little bit, we got her up to 60 grand, which I really appreciate. And it was able to get us with what we had budgeted already, to be able to get us into new radios. And we were actually looking at, because we've been limping along with some refurbished radios that we've been purchasing because the price is astronomical. We did a lot of research along with other agencies within St. Clair County and did some testing and evaluation with Kenwood radios. And they have performed outstanding. And we're talking, we can buy almost three radios to the price of one Motorola, which is an absolute shame. With this grant, this is going to outfit our entire police department, new radios in our cars, as well as preps across the board. The current radios that we have right now have been in service, most of them since 2008, since the inception of the 800-megahertz system. So we've gotten our money's worth out of them, but we continue to have issues. So it was a nice blessing here to get this grant and be able to put this forward and get new equipment, so, something much needed.
Yeah, Mike, didn't we approve some Motorola radios here not too long ago?
Those were refurbished radios.
Oh, I thought they were new.
No, no. No, that's why we didn't pay a whole lot for those radios. There's a company in Texas that they sell them refurbished for that reason. You can sit there and pick them up for around $8 to $1,100 a radio, opposed to $6,500 a radio. The only problem is them radios themselves, we? The only problem is them radios themselves, we, we are looking at going to an encryption in St. Clair County, which you're seeing most of your counties in the state are going to this encryption. With that being said, those radios are not capable of that. We could spend money, and that's what we had budgeted, the, the money that we had here if we did have to do that. The nice thing is with the money we budgeted to try to bring these old radios up to par to work on the system is gonna put us new radios across the board. Brand-new, already encrypted, already ready to go. So, it really was a big win for us.
You're talking about the additional 15,000 because the state is 60%.
Yes, because we had, originally, we budgeted to do upgrades on radios that we had already bought refurbished. So, but like everybody else in the county, we were stuck. I mean, to, to get the same amount of radios, if I went with Motorola, it would have been over $300,000.
I remember approving it. And you said we really didn't have a choice, but now we've got one, so.
Yeah, Chief, would you be able to do any cost recovery on the old radios that we purchased?
We're gonna try to, and if we can, absolutely. I mean, whatever we can get for them, we get for them.
How much was that?
What's that?
What do we pay? I can't remember when we voted on it.
For the old radios, I don't.
The refurbished ones?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not positive on that. But I think what we paid for them when we replaced them a few years ago, I think it was something around $12,000, something like that. But that was because they were used radios. The only problem is those radios after this year are gonna be end of service. So, if something breaks on them or anything like that, they're not serviced anymore. But that's what you end up with if, I mean, obviously, if you're buying used. But sometimes you don't have a choice. Like, we all know here, sitting here, Motorola is not a very cheap company to work with. I can say that, you know, due to, you know, working with them for years, and they don't move on their prices. It's nice to have an, an alternative that, that will work for us, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I will say, in the past, we, we had tried Motorola or Kenwood going back probably 10 years or so, and we had some issues. Since then, we had tested one and we've been using, Officer Broccoli's been using for probably close to a year now, and he's had no issues whatsoever. So, that's kind of what was a nice informed decision. You know, going forward, it's withstood everything that we were doing for the last year, so I see no issues going forward with them.
So, here's an ignorant question for you, because I don't know. If you're working with a Kenwood system, right, it's all based on frequency codes, right?
Correct.
Whether it's Motorola or Kenwood, it doesn't matter, it's based on the frequency.
Correct.
So, you used to be able to talk to other municipalities, the county, whoever's on that frequency, right?
Yes, and that's just it. We, we put together a, an, a board to where we actually did the studies as far as different radios, different locations, where we're having weak spots, where we have strong spots. Right now, those are things that are being worked on as well, as far as, there's a couple towers there in play right now that we've been working with the county on and something that's gonna enhance the signal strength and that a lot more, which is something we really need, especially due to the water and that out here. It really breaks up when you get there. But as far as the 800 megahertz, it doesn't matter as long as it's 800 megahertz and it's a trunking system, it will work. That and the new templates that we have designed for these radios are gonna be the same template throughout the entire county. So, we will still have our local channels that only we will have to talk back and forth on if we want, as does every other municipality, but we will have the ability to talk to our surrounding counties. Basically statewide, we'll be able to talk to whoever we need to talk to if we, if we have to travel with them as well. You know, back in the day when it was UHF, VHF, anybody could go to any store and pick one up and just buy this and go. That's not the case with these. These have to be programmed by the state, and they're actually a template that is put into the system that if the system doesn't recognize that because of the state putting it in there, it will not work.
Will Dispatch have to change?
No. Dispatch is already ready to go. This is something that we had gotten some grant money back here a couple of years ago. We have already upgraded our complete Dispatch. So, once these radios are done and they come back, it's just if, if we want to go to it, it'll be a matter of flipping the switch. We are, we're ready to go. We'll probably be the, the first in the county that is ready to go.
Yep. So, if we approve this tonight, it will go to the county commissioner, board of commissioners Thursday night. And they have it on their agenda to, to approve this, so.
Well, let's get to getting.
Yep.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the St. Clair County ARPA radio grant in the amount of $60,000.
Support. Okay, a motion and support. One other thing I, I did, Mike touched on it briefly. I mean, we, we owe a lot of kudos to the county for our, our communication. They're looking, we, we have this 800 megahertz system here, and it really didn't work that great. Doesn't work 100% like it should down here. And they're investing money to put an additional tower behind the court up in Marine City. And we have the tower here behind the high school. They're going to rebuild that, give it some more horsepower, more juice, more capabilities. And they're looking at another tower in Ira that will point out across the water where we have problems. And they're probably looking at one and a half, $2 million in investment of.
Yeah, figure, we're a unique area here. The problem that we have is we butt up to Canada. So, they gotta be so careful with the bandwidth and everything that they're doing that you're not bleeding over to Canada that it, it takes more resources that way. Not to mention, we, we sit in a pretty big sinkhole here. If you look at topographical, I mean, we're, we're a sinkhole and pretty much like, well, we're the swamp. We are the swamp. But being so close to Canada, and I can tell you firsthand, we had a frequency going back probably close to 10 years ago that every time our fire pages got set off, the nuclear plant in Canada.
That was.
Alarms would set off.
Oh, boy.
So, yeah, they, they kept trying to figure out who is it that's doing this?
Or in London, Ontario.
Yeah, and finally it came down to they figured out it was a frequency that we were using and we were licensed to use by the FCC, but somehow somebody didn't catch this and be the poor guy sitting at the nuclear plant.
This guy's calling, yeah.
Yeah, this, that was interesting.
It was. They had all kinds of sirens and people taking cover. Okay, we have motion and support to accept the 600, $60,000 grant. Any more discussion? Uh, it's a resolution. Now, roll call, please.
I don't even know where I am anymore. Krista Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next is a resolution to buy the radios.
Yep, don't go anywhere yet.
Or, or not resolution, but.
Hey, Mike.
But to, to purchase the radios.
Yep.
For a total of 81,46462. And I would recommend that we, if the board approves this, if we do it on condition that the St. Clair County approves our grant for Thursday night.
Is that your motion, sir?
Sure.
Support.
Okay, a motion and support to purchase the radios upon condition, upon the St. Clair County approves their, the grant Thursday night or their next board meeting.
There's 17 portables and then six in the cars, right?
Yep.
And then, I mean, since it's, they're giving us ARPA funds, do we want to consider use, you know, because it's 21 grand? Do you want to consider?
We have it in our budget.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I say we could use our ARPA funds, too, if you wanted to make that one of those things.
No, we have it in our budget.
All right.
All right, uh, roll call, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
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 We all say yes?
We all say yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next.
Thanks again.
Basically, the same thing. For our, we need to approve the county using their ARPA money for a stage. Estimated cost of $125,000. And I got the agreement. And.
I'll make a motion to approve the St. Clair County ARPA grant for our outdoor stage for 125,000.
Support. Yeah, motion support. And that, that's a quote for, for the stage itself. It does the curtting, the skirting, the stairs, and the self-leveling, so you can level it out.
Is it on wheels?
Yes.
It's a picture of it right here.
And.
What do you move it with?
Uh, we'll, we'll get a truck from, from Water Department, they have something.
They do?
Yeah, and my thinking is if we get this, we'll sell advertising on it and we'll use that cost to pay for the Water Department overtime for moving and setting up. So, with a little bit of advertising money, we will basically get, have our stage and have, have the moving of it and everything paid for.
So, the stage is going to belong to Clay Township?
Yep.
So, what regulations or procedures are gonna be in place for?
That'll be a question for our board at a later date.
As we move forward and who can use it?
That'll be a question for our board at a later date.
That's fine.
It's a lot of money for, you know, something that only costs us 500 times. Every time we rent one, I was hoping, you know, we could get something more for safety or whatever, but.
Well.
That's what they want to give us, I guess we take it.
They, like I say, they're investing about $2 million in our communications plus another 120 grand. And the other ones have picked them, so.
On the other side, were we paying a rental fee?
Yeah, we paid about $500 and we probably rent it, I don't know, 17, 18 times. So, we're, we're probably spending about $9,000 bucks.
So, it looks like we got.
$10,000.
Yeah, at, at least a five-year payback.
Yeah, so. All right, do we have a motion?
And support.
Roll call.
John DeBoer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion carries. And the next last thing is the same thing for outdoor exercise equipment. I got, gave them quotes and drawings and layout. It's all-inclusive. It's, we're asking for 176,273. These are no-match money. The, both of these pretty much cover the, both these bills.
I'll make a motion to approve the St. Clair County ARPA grant for exercise equipment in the amount of 176,273.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion?
I'm glad to see that come to fruition. We have been batting this around since 2017.
Oh, before then?
Well, since I got here.
The idea is we got this walking path in our park, and it's well-used. I mean, there's people walking in all the time. We're gonna have three, three locations where someone can walk, do workout. It's gonna be 17 stations and fully handicapped accessible. You'll be able to do a weight, a weight workout with, you know, presses, bench leg and everything. A balance workout with your core and cardio. We're gonna have a, a few things to do cardio on it, too. So, it's, it's, it's pretty slick, so. Just for FYI, okay, do we, do we have motion and everything?
And support. Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoer?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Hey, we're done. That's the longest ever.
Not ever.
Agenda, not ever. Pretty close.
Long this year.
Board member comments. Mark?
Well, now, planning commission, the 3478, excuse me, 1629 Mill Street Construction at the Pol barn has been postponed. Apparently, the, one of the attorneys didn't show up, so we postponed that to the next planning commission. I was gonna speak a little bit about 3478 on the outdoor storage. That has been, been approved, and that's at the coal cat now. I guess that's what they call it, the outdoor storage. And they're going to have a temporary holding pattern in the back for outdoor storage, temporary. And we gave them one year to complete the construction of the other Pol barn.
Or then they gotta come back.
Yeah, and then they gotta come back, right? That's it. Oh, and congratulations to Alan Stout.
Yeah. Maureen?
Do we have a March 14th meeting still? You said you'd get back with us.
Yeah, you know what? I'm gonna be out of town. What's the first week of April look like for everybody?
For what?
For the ARPA?
For ARPA meeting. And now we got the information.
He had to get back with us, so he did his own.
Yeah, now we got the information from the counties, too, so.
Yeah, he said he had to let us know for sure.
Yeah. What's the first week of April look like?
Um, fine.
Okay. I'll send out an email with a couple, next day or two, with a couple of April, first week of April dates. Okay.
Yeah, I'm good. We do have a board meeting on the second.
Yep.
Oh, it's on, it's on Tuesday instead of the first?
It's Tuesday, March 5th, 2024.
Shut up, Alexis.
Okay.
So, you don't want to pick a day now, you want to just?
Yeah, I'll do an email. John?
Just welcome aboard to Alan Stout.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Sounds good. Cindy?
No, I'm good. Election February went great, like the whole month of February was the election, so. We're all done, see you in August.
Yep.
Well, actually, it'll be July.
July.
The month of July will be the election. It'll be over the beginning of August, so.
Because of early voting?
Yes.
Yeah.
PSA?
Yeah, PSA time.
So, as of Saturday, March 2nd, the median river temperature is 34.3 degrees. And the fish are not quite in our area yet.
Detroit.
So, if you're a walleye fisherman, word has it there's a few fish up by the bridge in Port Huron, and there's a few fish down at the mouth of the Detroit River over by Peach Island. But other than that, 34 is a little chilly. I think we're gonna have to wait a few more degrees.
Any salmon yet?
Uh, they're spotty, but yes.
Yes. There's salmon right now.
Yep, that's all I got.
Okay.
Well, congratulations to Mr. Stout.
Um, for anyone that follows high school sports, we, this past weekend, had our individual state wrestling tournament. We actually qualified 11 kids, nine boys and two girls.
Record.
To the state finals. We had five that placed. We had three that took third place, one that took fourth place, and one that took eighth place. As a team, they ended the, the season with 42 wins and two losses, which is the most wins in the state of Michigan by any team. They were district champs, they were BWAC co-champs. They set a school record with 355 pins. They set a school record with 1,090 takedowns. They made team academic all-state with an average 3.87 GPA.
Wow.
And nine individual academic all-state honors.
And one of them is her son.
Congratulations.
For sure. Yep.
I just want to ask you, Artie, I mean, for, for Judith Campbell, can we put that on the next agenda?
Well, we gotta, I gotta see when it comes up with, it's, it's with the county, it's not just with us.
Well, I know, but we've opted out of their protocol.
Well, we can talk about this after our meeting, this is a board member comment.
But I mean, I'm just asking if we can have a meeting for her, because you said if we had people come out that we'd resee it. We had six people at that meeting, and it was a tie, 3-3, so.
Right, I, I gotta see when it comes up again.
All right, what do you mean? It's not, you said we could reverse it, so if we had a meeting.
Well, we'll talk about it after.
All right.
Thank you. All right, congratulations to Kevin and Bob, Alan for being in our fire department. I'm glad you know how to swim. Alan, for being in our fire department. I'm glad you know how to swim. I, I'm, I look forward to working with our, our Turtle, uh, what was it called?
Turtle Project?
Yeah, the Turtle Project and AIM, that's, that's a cool, cool thing too. And uh, yeah, that's about it. A lot of positive things going on and uh, like I say, we're uh, we're gonna, what, in April be going, you know, should, should be uh, starting on our playground equipment and and sometime this spring, they should be starting on our park, uh, the beach park, so yeah, it's quite, way cool stuff. And hopefully I get this grant for the new park on Harson's Island and get that ball rolling too. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Support.
All in favor, aye. Thanks for coming, everybody.